6:30.
Good evening. I'm calling the Monday, November 23rd, 2020 Planning and Commission Meeting to order. It is 6:30 PM. Tonight's Planning Commission Meeting will be held virtually through a Zoom webinar conference due to the state of local emergency for the COVID-19 pandemic. Commission members and staff will participate in this meeting via telephone and video conference. As Chair, I will be leading the Planning Commission Meeting, and the public is welcome to participate when invited throughout the meeting. Members of the public may attend the meeting by joining via Zoom. If you experience audio problems, we suggest you leave the meeting and then rejoin. This has usually fixed the issue. Additional instructions on how to participate are posted online at www.burnsvillemn.gov in the public meeting calendar. As usual, tonight's meeting is available for viewing on BCTV and on the city's website. If you are unable to participate this evening and would like to submit public testimony, I encourage you to email your comments to city staff or mail your comments directly to City Hall. You may participate in the meeting tonight by going to https://zoom.us/join and typing in the webinar ID 94124633227. Once you're logged into the meeting, please use the chat feature to tell the moderator which item you wish to speak to. You may also call into the meeting at 651-372-8299 and enter meeting ID 94124633227. For each public hearing, I will open up a time when you may speak to that item, and I will give instructions at that time. Your call will be muted until that public hearing. Please note, there may be a slight delay due to differences in technology. If speaking by phone, please mute your computer since there may be a delay. Now we'll move on to the agenda, and the first item on the agenda tonight is adoption of the agenda. Planning Commission members, do you see any issues or have any corrections to the agenda tonight? Okay, seeing none, I would ask staff if you have any corrections or additions to the agenda tonight?
None from staff.
Thank you, Ms. Madden. With that, may I have a motion for adoption of the agenda? Commissioner Roberts?
I move to approve the agenda.
Thank you, and a second. Commissioner Awad?
I second the motion.
Thank you, sir. And we will take roll call votes this evening, so if we could do a roll call vote to approve the agenda, I would appreciate it.
Yep, Commissioner Awad.
Hi.
Commissioner Henderson.
Hi.
Commissioner John.
Hi.
Commissioner Roberts.
Hi.
Commissioner Timmerman.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, the agenda passes, and we'll move on to approving the meeting minutes from our last meeting, which was October 26th, 2020. Planning Commissioners, do you see any changes or anything you want to note on the meeting minutes? See shaking of heads. Staff, do you have any changes or additions?
We do not have changes.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, I would like a motion to approve the minutes from the October 26th meeting. Commissioner John?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
I will second the motion.
Moved by Commissioner John, seconded by Commissioner Awad, and we will take a roll call to approve the minutes.
Commissioner Awad.
Hi.
Commissioner Henderson.
I'll abstain since I wasn't there last week.
Thank you. Commissioner John.
Hi.
Commissioner Roberts.
Staying.
Commissioner Timmerman.
Hi.
And the motion carries. We will now move on to the next agenda item, which is a public hearing for Kami Incorporated for a comprehensive plan amendment from BUS to HDR, a rezoning from B3 PUD, which is General Business Plan Unit Development to R3B PUD, which is High Density Residential Plan Unit Development, a planned unit development amendment, and a preliminary and final plat to create a one-lot residential subdivision to construct a 62-unit apartment building located at the northeast corner of Morgan Avenue South and Williams Drive. Tonight, Ms. Madden, our city planner, will provide a presentation of the item and an overview for the background report, and after that, we will open it up for the public hearing. Ms. Madden?
Thank you, Chair. All right, good evening, Planning Commissioners. Welcome back to fully virtual meetings. So as stated, the purpose of this evening's item is to conduct a public hearing related to a number of land use approvals for a new market rate apartment building that's proposed on a piece of vacant land at the northeast corner of Morgan Avenue South and Williams Drive. Next slide, please. So the subject apartment building site is currently zoned B3 PUD, which is the general business district with a planned unit development. It's designated as office/business/retail in our comprehensive plan. So the proposal is to rezone the property from B3 to R3B, which is high-density residential, as well as a regiding in the comprehensive plan from that business to HDR, which is high-density residential. So this is a similar zoning and land use to the parcels to the south and to the west and acts as a transition from the County Road 5 commercial area. Next slide, please. So the applicant has provided plans to plat the property into that residential subdivision and to conduct a 62-unit apartment building. The apartment building will have enclosed underground parking, some surface parking, some community space, fitness area, shared kind of gathering spaces, some outdoor and some indoor. The site is going to continue to maintain the access road easement that exists on the vacant lot today, although it is, as you'll see in some of the later site plans, shifting slightly. Next slide, please. So the site is just a little bit over two acres, 2.18 acre property. It currently exists as Outlot A of Kami Edition, and so the lot is proposed to be platted into a buildable lot and block of record in Kami Second Edition. So this plat is going to create this new lot for us to be able to approve a proposed apartment building after some of the rezoning comprehensive plan changes. The same dimensions as the existing outlot will be seen with this replat. Next slide, please. So some of the deviations included in this plan unit development are related to or related requests. So the lot size requirement for this proposal would be over 115,000 square feet. This is because the zoning ordinance does require additional square feet per unit related to density of a proposal. Because the proposed density is higher, we see a higher lot size as well, minimum requirement. So the lot itself is 94,990 square feet, and staff is supportive of that request for that deviation. The proposed lot does meet the lot with requirements for the R3B zoning district. Next slide, please. So the request is for a three-story, 62-unit apartment building on that 2.18 acre lot. So that density does turn out to be 28.4 units per acre. In R3B, the zoning density range for net density is eight to 20 units per acre, but with a planned unit development, that can be increased and requested to be increased, and that is part of this proposal. So there are 110 parking stalls, 62 of which are underground, meeting the one-to-one covered parking stall requirement for multifamily apartment buildings in the city code. There are also lot line setback deviations and building height deviations, which do relate to the site and situation of the proposal. So the south lot line designates or abuts a designated minor arterial, and per the city code, that would require a higher setback of 80 feet. The west lot line is a city street for that Morgan Avenue, but because the building height is higher, the setback is also higher. And this is something that exists in the R3B zoning district, and which you may not have seen in the mixed district where we normally see some of these multifamily apartment unit proposals. And so these are deviations that are included in the request. The property would have a 40-foot setback in either direction if it was not adding in that building height or the arterial road. So staff is supportive of the deviations based on that. So the request is for 41.1 at the south and 40.9 at the west. So that does meet that base setback within the ordinance when you don't add in those calculations for the higher building height and for the arterial road. We're also supportive of this deviation as by placing the building setback closer to the right-of-way. The parking is predominantly screened by the building from the neighboring properties. So all of that parking, as you can see on the site plan, the majority of it is internal, and then the area that is not, there are existing trees and new tree plantings that will be placed. So the building height is 51 feet 9 inches with the roof included compared to the 35 feet that would be needed without a conditional use permit. Because this is a planned unit development, that height increase deviation is included as well. And if this was a flat roof project, then that roof deviation wouldn't be necessary. So we are, again, supportive of that, and we will talk more about the building design in a later slide. So overall, the site design, it's designed with the existing neighborhood conditions in mind. Staff is supportive of the deviations described. Next slide, please. So seen here is the landscaping proposal for the application. A mixture of new installations as part of their proposal. All categories for the installation of plant materials are met with it from zoning ordinance. So they do meet the requirement for ornamental and evergreen trees and exceed city code requirements for overstory and shrubs. There are 25 existing overstory trees that are going to remain on site and identified on the plan. And it's going to be an irrigated site, and then the deviation that is requested as part of this would be related to the overall green space for the site. So the city code would require 50%, and what is proposed is 43%. However, with how the, as a benefit to the proposal, how the overall landscaping requirements into the categories are exceeding ordinance standards, and the building perimeter landscaping is at 87%, which is greater than the 50% listed in the ordinance. We are supportive of that green space deviation based on the overall landscaping plan going above and beyond ordinance minimums. Next slide, please. So shown here is a portion of the grading plan. There are some new improvements associated with the application. But one thing I do want to mention is that traffic was reviewed as part of this application by the city's development review engineer and based on some information that the applicant provided. So additional traffic impact study is not required. At the neighborhood meeting, there were some questions about traffic, not just because of this proposal, but in the general area and the neighborhood. So Sarah Lloyd, our engineering consultant, is here this evening if there are additional questions about that. But that information was reviewed as part of the proposal. The engineering-related conditions are related to some of their outstanding memo comments, a low-impact development management practices agreement, which is related to most development applications that we see before the planning commission, as well as development fees, which do include perk dedication, which is another condition of approval. You can see slightly on the southwest corner of the property, there are two underground retention systems for water quality and rate control. So this property is within the drinking water overlay district, so no infiltration is permitted, but there are no issues from that standpoint as proposed. Next slide, please. So shown here are the preliminary elevations of the property. So the building design incorporates a mixture of materials. It is proposed with a pitched roof style, so again, that does maintain compatibility with the surrounding area and some exterior decks with some aluminum metal accents and railings. So the structure is proposed to be 33 feet and 4 inches at the parapet and 51 feet 9 inches at the peak of the pitched roof. So as I mentioned before, there is a maximum building height except by conditional use permit, and that is 35 feet. This is just included in the request because of the pitched roof style, and there aren't any issues with this request in the planned unit development. Next slide, please. So the applicant was able to provide a way for us to have a virtual materials board and can speak to that if needed, but when we can come back to the slide with some images on it. Next slide, please. So shown here are the floor plans for the three occupied floors of the building, as well as the underground parking, again, showing that 62 parking stalls that are covered, meeting that city code requirement. On the third floor, there's a community room and a community deck shown in the southwest corner of the structure. There's just shy of 5,000 square feet of common space illustrated on the current floor plans for residents of the building. And then, as you can see in this graphic, the makeup of units that's currently proposed is 13-studio, six alcove, 31-bedroom, and 13-two-bedroom. So the applicant has indicated that the alcove-described spaces are very similar to a studio, but where they have that partial wall separating a bedroom area. So you may have seen some units like that. Next slide, please. So as mentioned, this is a comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning, which is included in the request. So the proposal is providing that transition between the existing commercial development along County Road 5, which a portion of that is owned in common by the current property owner who is coming forward with this development, and the medium-density and single-family low-density residential that kind of surround it from a distance. So staff is going to complete this comprehensive plan amendment with the Metropolitan Council. So that would be coming, there is still a little bit more to do after the public hearing. A neighborhood meeting was held on November 9th on Zoom. There were six residents in attendance, and as mentioned before, there were some conversations about traffic both in the area and that might be impacted by the site. The applicant was to take the time that evening to go over the trip generation counts and estimates with the residents that attended the meeting. There was also some discussion about some screening possibilities, none that would be required based by the city ordinances that they might do with some of the neighboring property owners, and just some discussion about whether the access road will remain, and that is shown on their site plan that that easement will remain and that roadway will remain. Next slide, please. All right, so deviations included in the planned unit development. So the apartment building use, a CUP in the underlying district, so it's just included in the planned unit development. Staff, of course, is supportive of that. As mentioned, net density and lot size, which were slightly related based on the proposal, the overall green space, the principal structure, front setback on the west and south lot lines, and that would be due to the height of the building, and they're both fronts because on a corner lot, it would both be fronts. And then the building height, as mentioned. One thing I meant to mention when talking about some of the engineering considerations is there is a retaining wall in the side yard that is shared between the two property owners in common. So it's on the east side yard near where the drive aisle brings you into the underground parking. It's not within any easements, but it is within the setback distance, which is fine, but because it's 8.3 feet instead of eight feet at its highest point within that side yard point, it is a conditional use permit and thus a deviation in the PUD. Next slide, please. Benefits to the PUD are that a long vacant parcel is being developed. The request is for new multifamily market rate housing, which has been a kind of a focus area of the city relatively recently. The proposal does exceed building perimeter landscaping standards as well as overall plant installation requirements based on the square, the amount of green space that they have, and that the cross-access is going to be maintained between the Super America site and that commercial shopping center site and the subject site where the proposal is for the apartment building. Next slide, please. All right, so this evening is a public hearing. Staff is recommending approval of the application subject to these seven conditions. So the first condition is that the revised cross-access agreement is provided to the city and recorded with the county. This is something the applicant was already planning on doing, and it was also a condition of approval the last time this site was moving forward with a planned unit development amendment. So it is a continuation of that condition. A signed permit shall be obtained prior to installation's exterior signage of the site. And there are no signed plans currently, but they will be able to come later and be reviewed by staff. A photometric plan, which meets exterior lighting standards of the ordinance, be provided at the time of building permit application. So that's just one plan that was not able to be reviewed yet, but there are no anticipated issues with that. Another item would be exterior lighting cut sheet information specifications provided at building permit application, which is a standard condition for these types of applications. And then, as mentioned, the three engineering-related conditions related to some outstanding comments, the lid agreement and the development fees paid to the city prior to releasing the signed plat for recording. So I can stand for any questions, as well as our engineering consultant, Sarah Lloyd, who's in the audience if needed. And then the applicant, Paul Tucci, or representative from the applicant team, is also available to answer questions. Again, it is a public hearing. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Madden. I think we'll take some questions from Ms. Madden. Now I do see Commissioner Awad chomping up the bit. So Commissioner Awad, if you have a question, go ahead.
Yeah, quick question. What? I'm off mute, right? Okay, yeah. What is involved with the lid management, low-impact development management agreement? Is that like silt fence and that sort of thing, or?
Sarah, can you speak to that, please?
Sure, I can. Good evening, Commissioners. That really is a long-term maintenance agreement between the city and the developer for these underground stormwater features, so that that's, that maintenance is taken care of on a annual basis.
Thank you, Ms. Lloyd. Are there other questions at this time from Ms. Lloyd? Okay, seeing none, I would like to open the public hearing. It is 6:52 PM, and I would like to invite Mr. Tucci to address the commission if he is so inclined. I don't know that he is on the meeting any longer. Can we get confirmation if Mr. Tucci is still available? Otherwise, we can look to any other folks who may want to speak to this item.
Chair, it looks like Mr. Tucci is not on the meeting anymore.
Okay, that is fine. And do we have anyone else who would like to speak to this item?
Nobody on Zoom.
Okay, very good. I will close the public hearing at 6:54, and I will open it up to Commissioners for further discussion and questions for city staff. Commissioner Roberts?
Oh, yeah, thank you. I guess this is more of just an observation. I noticed that, and I don't know if staff can answer this or not, it's not always our place to ask certain business questions, but in regards to multifamily housing, only 13 of the 62 rooms in this place are, has two bedrooms. All 49 are single bedrooms or just a studio or an alcove-type thing. Is that going to bring in the multifamily-type stuff that we were looking for? Or is that something we don't even worry about?
Thank you, Commissioner Roberts. So that isn't something that we would delve into at this level. The reference for a multifamily apartment building is just kind of a terminology type of descriptor, not necessarily that it's geared towards family units rather than singles or other leasing people.
I was curious because I was really hoping he was going to be on because that might have been the question answered as maybe they're targeting more elderly people who are single, who are looking for that one bedroom. Who knows?
And I don't want to speak for the applicant since he isn't on the meeting any longer, but at the neighborhood meeting, he did indicate that they were not marketing towards any specific age group and that it was a general availability type of leased units. He had mentioned to me earlier today that he was prepared to talk about their market study, and unfortunately, I'm not sure if he had an issue with the Zoom call, but if he pops back on, we can ask him some of those questions.
Since I still got you, I noticed, I mean, that we always take into consideration the meetings that you have with the neighbors, and that it seemed like in your notes there wasn't any real strong indication either way that there was any problems with this.
Thank you.
Traffic, maybe, but that's always a question.
Traffic is always a question. That's a good observation. In general, yeah, like I mentioned in my report, no strong feelings in either direction, whether in opposition to the proposal or in support of it. The, I think the neighbors were pleased. It seemed that they were pleased with the applicant's presentation at the neighborhood meeting and appreciated his ability to, he really dove deep into some of the questions and explained some of the market that they had looked at and the traffic numbers that they had looked at as he's been working with the property owner to develop this site actually for many years as both commercial and then now as residential. So generally, the questions were also related to the fact that Williams Drive was just recently, was a city road project, so there were a lot of concerns about how this apartment building may play into that, but nothing, no strong concerns or negativity.
No big red flags by the neighborhood. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Sarah.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, any additional questions for Ms. Madden?
I have just a couple, and I guess first and foremost is I'm not familiar with an alcove apartment, and it looks like based on the, what you gave us in the background, it's a one-bedroom apartment, but the bedroom does not abut the window. And it sounds like in your verbal description that it's not actually a full bedroom, it's a half-wall. Is that something that's common, or have there ever been concerns by the fire department for that type of setup? I guess I haven't come across that before.
Thank you, Chair Timmerman. That's a good question. So this isn't something that has been seen in some of the proposals that we've brought for you in recent times, but it is something that I have seen as quite common in the market in the Twin Cities as a renter. And the, it is a partial wall where the bedroom isn't adjacent to the window. So it is a studio with slightly more separation, kind of in between that studio and a one-bedroom apartment. As for concerns from a building and fire standpoint, that was not brought up by our fire marshal or building official in their review. So I would interpret that as no outstanding issues.
Okay, thank you, and I will save my other one or two questions for a few minutes. If we, it looks like Mr. Tucci has rejoined the meeting, and so if we let him settle in. Mr. Tucci, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. We did have a question that you might be able to answer for us. Yes, thank you. We did have a question that you might be able to answer for us. Commissioner Roberts, do you want to ask your question again?
Yeah, it's pretty simple. In regards to the the number of units that you have, the 62 units, 13 only have two bedrooms, where the rest are basically built on a one bedroom studio or alcove type thing. So it's limited space for for families per se. It's almost for like a single person. Are you targeting this towards any certain market? Or are you basically just opening it up?
It is. So we did a market assessment of the area. And the percentage of units, we use Maxfield for all of the market studies that we do. And the unit mix was based on that market study for the best best rate of success. They they will lay out what they think studios, alcoves, ones and twos should be. And I just jumped back on as Sarah was explaining the alcoves versus the studios. One of the things that we're finding more and more in the renters of that studio is they like the rents of a studio, but they like a little of the privacy in their sleeping area. They don't want to pay for the full one bedroom, but they like a little privacy. So you do. It's it's somewhat of a three quarter wall to allow some privacy, but still leave the the entire floor plan open. So the the numbers that you see as far as studios, ones and twos comes right from our market study and what we can capture for total number of units and what that mix should be. So hopefully that answers the question you had.
All right, thank you. So we were just going through some questions, but we wanted to give you an opportunity, Mr. Tucci, as well to just give us whatever information or background you have on the project. As much or as little as you're you're wanting to share tonight.
Sure. Well, you know, as as Sarah said in her very well presented overview, this has been a property that's been owned for about 27 years and have looked at a lot of different uses on that back lot. Have never been able to secure anything there. We've we came up with this idea, knowing that the retail environment is difficult. And there's a there's pressure on a lot of cities in the metro from Met Council to add housing and different mixes of housing. We looked at this opportunity to do 60 plus units. And we came up with this plan that you see. As Sarah said, we did hold a neighborhood meeting. I would tell you that I was my notes from that show that the only real question of substance revolved around traffic. And a lot of it had to do with traffic a couple of blocks down from us and how it's getting off the highway and kind of running through the neighborhood. We did talk about our traffic memo that we provided to the city. And, you know, high level, I'll tell you that an apartment complex versus a retail development of some sort on the two acres, whether it's two single users, a bank and a fast food or a multi tenant building with a bank, you we're gonna probably have let half or less of the trips than a commercial development would have there. And we we have provided that information to the city. And as Sarah said, it was reviewed and was accepted by the city's traffic consulting people. So I I think that it does fit in. We we did the other one other item is the height of the building. We did feel that the pitched roof and the color of tiles or color of shingles would reflect better than a flat roof in that neighborhood. So we did go with that. So I'll leave it at that, and then I'll just keep answering questions.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, Commissioners? All right, I don't see any. I do just want to comment that, you know, this whole area on County Road 5 and Highway 13 has been kind of in transition for decades. And now that the interchange is completed at Highway 13 and County Road 5, I think that is a great opportunity for development in all of the areas. So it's nice seeing this long vacant parcel having a a use here. I guess just as I'm kind of looking at the Google Maps here, Mr. Tucci, I have one question is that is was the the occupant of the dental clinic just to the north of this this new development, did they have comments on the project?
Yes, he his comments were mostly, and Sarah will correct me if I'm wrong here, but from my notes, they were about just making sure that we put some screening on the edges of that driveway and parking that I'll call it that remote parking to the north there. And as you can see from our site or landscape plan, we do have that parking covered. We'll look to slide some more landscaping in on the north side of that shared drive aisle. I think that's the best fix. The question came up about a privacy fence, and I will tell you that we don't like a privacy fence because it presents a nighttime security issue. The last thing we need is somebody hiding behind a fence and having a resident be assaulted. So we would we'll look to do it with some plantings and making sure that our lights are are cut off. You know, the the good news is is that he's there in normal business hours, kind of the eight to five. So I just think that the crossover of traffic and impact from the apartments to his business time aren't going to be there.
Very good. Commissioner John, do you have a comment or question?
Yeah, I had a quick question. This might be more from this man. So the height requirements, what is the reasoning behind the height requirement in this zoning district? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Thank you. So I don't know that I can speak to reasoning at this moment. But the 35 feet max and then a CUP was actually a common through multiple zoning districts cutoff before the changes to no maximum height requirement or no, yeah, no maximum height requirement in mix and then HOC and things like that that we did a year or so ago as part of a zoning code amendment. So that 35 feet is actually consistent with other zoning districts and commercial districts as well, not just for multifamily residential districts. And it is not in line with some of the building code standards for when materials have to change based on height, but it is that is the standard that is in the city code at this time in across several zoning districts.
Okay, so nothing to worry about when it comes to overriding that with this this change. So
Oh, sorry to interrupt. From the staff standpoint, that's not a concern. Particularly in this case where the pitch roof design was intentional in nature based on the neighborhood design and where the parapet and where the where a flat roof would have been if the applicant proposed one similar to some of the other applications for apartment buildings that have been seen over the last year or so. Then it wouldn't have been an included deviation. But it is allowed to exceed that by conditional use permit in the ordinance. So this is not a deviation that staff is concerned has concerns with.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments, Commissioners? I don't see any on Zoom either. I guess at this point I would entertain a motion. Commissioner Roberts.
Yeah. Pull this up. Without any more questions. Nice job, staff. It was nice not having any big red flags to worry about on this. You guys did a good job. I move that we recommend to the city council approval of the comprehensive plan amendment from business retail office to a high density residential, a rezoning from B3 PUD to an R3B PUD. Plan unit development amendment and a preliminary and final plat subject to the following seven conditions that are listed.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Roberts. Commissioner Wad?
Yeah, nice. It looks like a nice project. I'm happy to second the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Wad. And is there any final discussion? Seeing none, could we please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Wad? Commissioner Henderson?
Hi.
Commissioner John?
Hi.
Commissioner Roberts?
Hi.
Commissioner Timmerman?
Hi. And the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Tucci, for joining us this evening and
Thank you, sir. Sorry about the hiccup. We have a whole problem here in the neighborhood.
No problem. If you stand just one second, Ms. Madden, will you just quickly explain the the timing of the next steps here?
Yes, I can do that. So the city council meeting will be December 8th meeting, which is a Tuesday at 5:30 PM. And then, as we've talked about Paul with the conference of plan amendment, there will be another time period where there's some waiting with the Metropolitan Council before that goes back to the city council for that final action. Now, it doesn't have a specified meeting date at this time.
All right. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We will move on now to the next agenda item, which is a public hearing on the application of City of Burnsville for a zoning ordinance amendment to Title 10, zoning chapter 30, signs related to new provisions created to regulate temporary decal installations. Ms. Madden will provide a brief presentation on this, and then we will probably regroup.
Thank you, Chair. So this item would be related to the building expression topic that has been reviewed by staff as part of the 2020 planning commission work plan. And while we have been working on it and had hoped to have it on this evening's agenda based on some changes from some internal staff, we are recommending that the planning commission continue this to the December 14th planning commission meeting for further review from staff.
Okay, thank you. Because this was intended to be a public hearing. Ms. Madden, should I open it for open and close for the public hearing and continuance?
Deb, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I do not believe that we need to open it. Can just continue it.
Actually, you should open it and have a motion to continue.
Okay, thank you.
So I do, but I do not close the public hearing then. I just continue it?
Yes, that's correct.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Girls. Commissioner John, did you have a comment or a question? Or that might be
I was just going to move. I was gonna move that we continue it to the December 14th.
So I'm going to open the public hearing for this particular item. And I will wait one moment just to be sure that there's nobody who wants to comment on this. I don't see anybody on Zoom. And so at this point, I would like a motion to continue this item to the December 14th, 2020 meeting.
So I will move that we continue this to the December 14th, 2020 planning commission meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner John. Commissioner Roberts?
Second.
Thank you. And if we could have a roll a roll call, please.
Commissioner Wad?
Hi.
Commissioner Henderson?
Hi.
Commissioner John?
Hi.
Commissioner Roberts?
Hi.
Commissioner Timmerman?
Hi. Okay, thank you. With that, I think we will move to updates. Commissioners, any updates from you? Doesn't look like it. Staff, any updates?
Yes, thank you. So as mentioned, the December 14th will be your final planning commission meeting of the year. On that meeting, we will be having the building expression related ordinance amendment to the sign code as well as the 2021 planning commission work plan discussion items. So if there are any items that you would like to add to that work plan or requests, think about that over the next couple of weeks, and we will talk about it on the 14th. And I'll also be doing a just a quick update on a citywide code change that we're anticipating to happen in 2021. So just to provide a brief overview on what it appears that is going to look like and how that might involve the planning commission. And so just a brief update on that. But no applicant based hearings are currently scheduled on that meeting. But keep an eye on our development review map for stuff that is upcoming. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Madden, are we going to have council member workmen or or council liaison join us for the meeting on December 14th? Or have we decided to forego that? I think I I remember that we were talking about doing it in November and then pushed it to December, but I guess I don't remember where we left.
Thank you. I apologize. I I think in my mental note, I had thought we had moved it on to the next quarter. If we'd like to have it on the 14th, I can work tomorrow to make sure that that can be scheduled for after the planning commission meeting. If that's something that you, as a commissioner, are interested in having on the 14th. And just to make sure that he can be penciled in for that. Otherwise, it could be early winter 2021.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, are there any pressing issues? Or would you be okay if we move that to you know, maybe February or March of next year?
Yeah, I'd say move it back if we can. It'd be nice to do it in a non Zoom, you know, in a non Zoom format.
Yeah, give Vince a break from last time.
I'm sure he will appreciate that. All right, I don't see any pressing issues, so I think that would be fine, Ms. Madden. Let's pick some some light meeting in February or March and pencil him in.
All right, I will make that happen.
Great, thank you. All right, so before we adjourn, I'd just like to remind folks that members of the public can submit additional public comment related to the items on this evening's planning commission meeting until 4:30 PM on Friday, November 27th. These comments will be included with the city council background for consideration. At this time, I'd like to request a call for adjournment of our November 23rd planning commission meeting. Commissioner Roberts?
I'll make sure. First of all, everybody, friends of mine, have a good Thanksgiving and a safe holiday. With that, I move to adjourn this meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Roberts. You as well. And do we have a second?
No.
I'll second that.
Commissioner John seconds. Thank you, sir. And if we could have a roll call for adjournment, please.
Commissioner Wad?
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Thank you. Hi.
Commissioner Henderson?
Hi.
Commissioner John?
Hi.
Commissioner Roberts?
Hi.
Commissioner Timmerman?
Hi. Thank you all so much. Happy Thanksgiving and our meetings adjourned.